It's 10:30. Let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Vok, would you call the roll?
Mr. Howell?
Here.
Mr. Winger?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Old?
Here.
Mayor Kramer? Here. We'll open it up for public comment. If we've got anybody that would like to say anything, please keep in mind this is quasi judicial. It's the only thing on the agenda. Saying no public comment, we will go right into our public hearing. Before we get started on this, let me... Tammy, I'm gonna let you read that. Does it have to be read by the mayor?
No.
Okay.
It's application number A1500006 submitted by law firm Michael O'Hare, appealing the planning and zoning board's decision denying a requested variance from the 15-foot side property line setback for the extension of an existing carport.
Okay. Is there any of the council members that has any communications or visited the site that the applicant or the appellant has... who's gonna present their case about?
None.
Nope. Nope. Okay. We need to swear in everybody, so if you plan on speaking, I would need you to stand and raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Mr. McGary, I believe you're first on presentation.
I'm first up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The variance is to allow an encroachment of five feet into required side yard setback of 15 feet pursuant to section 61.06 of the code for a distance of 10 feet along the west side yard. The variance is requested to allow construction to attach carport within the 15-foot yard setback. I just want to clarify that, that it says of an existing carport. Actually, it used to be a carport. It was converted to a port, so I have the survey, which is Exhibit A, that shows that. But basically, you would add additional 10 feet to that structure. The property itself is approximately 20,900 square feet, zoned R1A. It's got a width of 95 feet and a length of 220 feet. The existing residence is located 10 feet from the side property line. At the time, the residence was constructed in 1956. The setback requirement would see either 15 feet or 10 percent of the width. As the lot width was 95 feet, the required setback time was only 9.5, though it was built to 10 feet. The current requirement is 15 feet, which was enacted sometime in 1970, so the rules have changed since the house was originally built. The property owners proposed, as I said, to construct the carport to attach residence. Basically, you would extend the structure 10 feet toward Gray Twig Road, which would be an extension of the nonconforming setback, so that's why they have to get in variance. For variance to be granted, it has to meet all the criteria of section 6602, which is the general criteria, and 6603, which is the specific criteria. I provided in Attachment D for an easy reference the criteria so you could look at it. Granting a variance, there are very high standards for variance. And why is that? It's to ensure that the zoning regulations are not waived or modified in a piecemeal, will-and-illy fashion, which would undermine the very legislative process that establishes these regulations. So in many cases, it's very difficult, in most cases, very difficult to get a variance. If there are problems in the code, the code should be changed, not handing out variances to allow modifications to the code, except where they meet the unique hardship requirements of the criteria. As this is your first variance, I want to go over, in the staff memo, there's four following principles regarding variances, and these are based on case law and our code. I'm just gonna read them to you, and I want you to think about this when you go through when you hear the testimony from staff and from the appellant. "A variance is only authorized if, due to the circumstances, unique to the applicant's property itself and not shared by other property in the area. A variance is only authorized if it is created by an undue and unnecessary hardship caused by the zoning regulations. A variance hardship cannot be self-created. It must be the land, not the nature of the project, which must be unique and create the hardship. The mere preference of the property owner wants to do with the property does not constitute a hardship entitling the owner to a variance." So please keep those in mind. And going through the analysis, the first, the general criteria, and I'm not gonna go through these. These are very basic. So the specific criteria, the ones that need to be met, and normally, most variances aren't gonna reach the threshold of these kind of adverse impacts. It was brought up by the appellant in there, but it was not discussed by the Planning and Zoning Board because, in the opinion that the Planning and Zoning Board staff, they did not meet the specific criteria, so there was no need to go through with that kind of exercise. Section 6603 is the specific criteria. And I'm gonna go through the required findings, the response from the applicant or the appellant, and of course, they're here, and they could expound upon what they provided. The first required finding is that the application of the zoning ordinance causing an exceptional and unique hardship. The appellant's response is, "The home was constructed of concrete block had been built, encroaching five feet in the west side property setback area, 15 feet and only 10 feet from the sideline either before the current setback was required. Slab and structure cannot be moved or removed without damage to the entire house. Conversion of what appears to be the original carport in the main part of the structure eliminated parking, parking space requiring guests to park in a narrow street." The code, in our response, the code in our analysis, "The code doesn't cause a unique hardship, and that the house met the 1956 side yard setback for the R1A zoning district. Numerous lots in the neighborhood have the same lot width and length configuration of the subject property, which hardly makes the circumstances unique only to the owner's property." And I've attached C, which you can see in the aerial of the lots in that very area. "At the time house was constructed, the minimum required side yard setback was width of 90... for a lot with width of 95 feet was 9.5 feet. The existing regulations for R1A set a 15-foot setback for all R1A zone lots with a minimum lot width of 75 feet. This setback may only be modified if this lot is less than 75 feet. Since the minimum lot width is 75 feet and the lot size is 10,000 feet in the R1A district, a case can hardly be made that the current zoning regulations are creating an exceptional hardship for the subject property, since it has a greater lot width and it's almost double the size of the lot area for R1A property, or minimum requirements. The response regarding the move of the entire house is not germane, as the issue has to do with the location of the carport, unless the appellant is trying to make an argument the entire house must be moved to accommodate the proposed carport within the current setback requirements. However, as the subject lot is 20 feet wider than the required minimum lot width and twice the minimum lot size for R1A-laid lots, the property owners have had, have or have had ample opportunity to property design improvements to the residence and property to allow for the construction of the carport in a location desired by them, but compliant with the existing zoning regulations." Number two, that the exceptional and unique hardship is not solely due to the owner's actions. And the response is, "The encroachments existed when the home was purchased and were not caused by applicants and were encroachments when the home was built. The purchase of property that is not conforming to code is not and does not create a hardship. The hardship was created entirely by the property owners who purchased the property with the nonconforming setback. The nonconformity should have been discovered by the property owners through due diligence when they purchased the property." In the staff's testimony at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on the variance request, which staff indicated the property owner had not explored other alternative locations on the property, and you could discuss that with the appellant. "As stated previously, the property is significantly larger than the minimum lot size for R1A zone properties, both in terms of lot width and size. The existing porch and residence are located 45 feet from the Gray Twig right-of-way that would allow alternate locations for the carport to meet the 15-foot setback. To accept the position that the carport must be located where proposed allows the project itself to create a hardship by the property owners." In Exhibit B, the appellant also stated evidence provided that the location of the septic system eliminated other construction options. Although no specific location was provided in that hearing, a research of the records indicate that the present owners who purchased the property in 2013 made several significant improvements to the property, including a backyard swimming pool, 832-foot addition to the existing residence, and installation of new septic tank drain field. I think above facts lead to the conclusion that any hardship created were done solely by the decisions of the property owners and should have been handled at that time. Three, that the variance will be compatible with the physical characteristics of the neighborhood. The appellant's response, yes, "All will continue to be incorporated in the facade of the existing structure while reducing on-street and uncovered parking." The staff analysis, "The variance is not compatible with the physical characteristics of the neighborhood, as improvements made to other properties in the neighborhood must and have complied with the 15-foot setback. The issue about reducing on-street and uncovered parking is immaterial to this decision." Your decision. Number four, that the variance granted will be in harmony with the intent and purpose of this code. Appellant's response, yes, "Remaining setback area will continue as it's had for decades, while conversion, the driveway and pervious carport area will be incorporated under main structure roofline." Instead of... applicant's response should be staff analysis. Staff got carried away here. That'd reflect the applicant made this response. "If granted, the requested variance would not be in harmony with the intent of the code as it increases the nonconforming existing structure. As indicated previously, other options exist. Just because such options may not be the preference of the property owners doesn't constitute a hardship. The property owners should have considered their need for a carport when making decision regarding other improvements to the property in 2013." Finally, number five, that the variance granted is the minimum necessary in order to alleviate an exceptional and unique hardship. And appellant's response, yes. Staff's analysis, the preceding staff analysis demonstrate that no exceptional or unique hardship exists. Therefore, the staff reaches the conclusion, which was reached by the Planning and Zoning Board, the variance doesn't meet all the specific criteria pursuant to 6603 for granting the variance. The staff finds that there is no basis for an exceptional and unique hardship, and that the request for the variance was created solely by actions decided to the property owners. Staff recommends the city council to uphold the Planning and Zoning Board's decision to deny the variance. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Does council have any questions for staff's presentation?
Not at this time.
Tim, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said this was originally a porch?
Yes, it was a carport. I think we all agree. It used to be a carport. It was converted sometime over to a porch, and that's what it shows in the survey if you look at Attachment A.
This was... do you know when that improvement was made?
I don't know. I don't know if it was done without the benefit of the permit. I didn't find anything, but these are old residences. A lot of times, you can't find things. I mean, I didn't get into that. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Okay?
But well done prior to their...
Oh, yes. It was done when they bought the house. It was already...
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from council? If not, does the appellant have any questions for staff?
I just quit.
Oh.
For your record, my name's Michael O'Hare. I'm a lawyer with offices on Cardinal Drive in Bureau Beach at 3111 Cardinal Drive. And I have photographs that I don't know whether or not staff has supplied you, that I think help a little bit in understanding what we're trying to deal with here. So let me ask that...
Give the light table.
If Wayne will do that for me. I can't drive that thing myself.
We can't either.
All right.
We have to get this on, there's so many cameras.
Thank you, Wayne. The first photograph is a view from the street, and these photographs are taken from the property records of the appraiser, property appraiser for the county. And there's a photograph of the house, which tells you a lot more, I think, than the materials you've been provided. The house was built in 1956, which was a momentous year. It was the year I graduated from Bureau Beach High School. But I used to date a girl in high school who lived on Gray Twig, and I can tell you, in 1956, one, Gray Twig was a boulevard. It had a median running down the middle with a lane on one side and a lane on the other. It's kinda like, and was almost as large as A1A adjacent to Rio Mar and the golf course. That was done away with. The boulevard was canceled out and abandoned, and it's a two-way street at this point. But there were only about three houses built in 1956 on that street, as I recall, because I had more occasion than I really needed to, perhaps, to be going up and down the street. This was, as I recall it, one of the earliest houses there, and one of the other residents on Gray Twig in the early days was Gordon Johnson, who was an attorney and represented the town of Indian River Shores for several years. The lattice area that you can see is the area that we're talking about. And I know you've received copies of the minutes of the hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, which really, if you've read the minutes themselves, disintegrated into a bit of a shambles at the end. And I accept a large part of the blame for that. The hearing before P&amp;Z had been rescheduled and put off for one reason or another, and I had asked for that to be extended. And it occurred to me that we are asking to extend a driveway and construct a carport where there used to be a carport, was originally, and for many years. And the area we're talking about is five by 10, five feet by 10 feet. It is smaller than the cockpit in which the planner is seated right now. By a large degree, it's five feet by 10 feet. I thought to myself that this is no great consequence. We're looking at one of the larger lots in the Central Beach area. It's half an acre, a little more than 20,000 square feet. What is 50 square feet? How consequential is that? So I went to the hearing and went through the hearing, and the staff and the board members began asking me questions. I couldn't answer. I didn't know where the drain field and septic tank were located. And actually, that was... that question was raised, or that issue was raised, as rendering impossible a suggestion that Tim made in the course of the meeting by Peter Robinson, who also lives on the street, down at the west end of the street, close to the river. And he is a builder and contractor, so I deferred to him on that and would do so if Peter were here today, but I don't see him. Peter was there to indicate to the board that all of the people on the street, and he'd canvassed them, were in favor of granting the variance. Almost everybody had a parking space undercover, most of them in garages. Here, we're only asking for a carport. The second photograph, and I'm risking my presentation when I do this, I think. There we go. The second house, the first house on the corner of Mockingbird and Gray Twig, is designated by the numeral 120 on the aerial. And immediately next to it is the house we're talking about here. And if you look on the west side, you can see how small the area is between the house and the adjacent property line. There is quite a bit of difference between the house and the neighbor's house. It's just the property line that's that close. And this aerial will, I think, explain a lot of things that I wasn't able to deal with at the hearing before planning and zoning. And if you will recall, if you've read the minutes, at about the end of the meeting, I think it was Ken Dig or perhaps Peggy Lyons, who suggested that a continuance would be suitable, if not desirable in this case, to fill in the information gaps that I was not able to fill. And I agreed to that. And as a matter of fact, I was packing up my bag of tricks here and taking it home when one of the board members said, "Well, I'm going to move against granting the variance." He said, "We just don't have enough information." And I can't quarrel with that conclusion, but was not the reason, a good reason, for denying the request. It could have been continued, and we would have answers to the questions, which I'm going to give you today this morning. And I have with me the owner of the house, one of the owners, the spouse of Tom Wilson and Marjorie Wilson can supply you any information that I can't. Tim, rather, at the end of the meeting, suggested two things. He said, "Well, you could just drive around the house and put the carport in the rear." And the dimensions of the thing and the geometry of the house and the amount of space, 10 feet on each side, kind of rendered that difficult, if not impossible, in my mind. But since then, I've been to the house, and you can see from the aerial, the vegetated area just to the east on the right-hand, there is an oak tree there, a specimen oak, which must have a girth, a diameter, I should say, a diameter of probably two feet. It's as big or bigger than the oak tree out in front of City Hall. And there's no way in the world that that tree should be sacrificed for a parking space. However, if I can address the idea of a parking space for one minute, yes, it's a hardship. Nobody's in a wheelchair here. The house is not going to be torn down. But it is a hardship to live in a neighborhood that's subject to the sun, as it is here, and come out to a hot car every afternoon. But more importantly possibly is, if you drive up and down Gray Twig, it's only a couple of blocks south of Live Oak Road. That neighborhood is chock-full of ancient oak trees, and I mean really old, large oak trees. And an oak tree is rough on a car. You get pollen in the springtime, and in the fall, you get acorns and dents. So that a car undercover is much to be desired, if not absolutely essential, if you're going to live on Gray Twig. And if you drive the length of the street, you'll see that that's been dealt with in most cases. However, that's on the east side of the house. If you go to the west side, there is also located on the east side of the house, all of the mechanical equipment for the house, the air conditioning compressors, the pool pumps and system, are all on the east or right side of the house, underneath the oak tree. The oak tree, I would say, is within four feet of the property line. It's 10 feet from the property line to the building, so that leaves about six feet for you to drive around and put a driveway. So you couldn't go around the east side of the house. What about the west side of the house? The west side of the house, and again, you can tell from the vegetation, has a comparable tree. It's almost just as big, I'd say maybe 20 inches in diameter, and it's located smack bang between the house and the property line. So it's virtually impossible to drive around, and you can't even see the swimming pool behind the house because of the oak trees hanging over it. That's why we can't go around the house and locate a carport or a driveway in the back of the house. You cannot get a car around the house. Tim's second suggestion was, "Well, the house is located 45 feet back from the street." And yes, that's quite true. It wasn't always that way until the abandonment of the road, but now it is 45 feet, and it is a big yard. And it's a very handsome yard with that spot of lawn in the front. And to put a parking structure slap up in the middle of the yard aesthetically, not to mention practically, which I'll address in just a second, aesthetically, it doesn't do a thing for the house or the neighborhood at all. But practically speaking, the part of the object of having a parking space close to the house is to permit access to the kitchen primarily, but to the rest of the house, too, so that you don't have to walk in the rain to get from the car to the house. It would be just... it'd be shameful to put a new driveway in and a garage or carport. And it's a carport we're talking about. There won't be any garage doors or walls to the structure in the front yard, smack in the middle of that lawn. And yet, we could wiggle it from one side of the lawn to the other side of the lawn. But there is a solution available. It's what was originally the case with this house. Somebody, and behind the lattice on the first photograph, is an enclosed area, but it's not enclosed with walls. A cement block wall has been built at the end, so that if the existing remnants of the parking lot are extended by an additional 10 feet, there will be 20 feet of space within which to park a vehicle and put a roof over it. That's what we're asking for. The hardship is not world-shaking, but it is a hardship not shared with most of the other people on the street or in the Central Beach area at large, I would say. Most people have a place to park their cars out of sight of the street and without having to park on the side of the street. So we are here today to ask that largely because the Planning and Zoning Commission never got to the merits of the application. They felt that they didn't have enough information, and I concede they did not have enough, and I confess to not knowing where the drain field was. But they never got to the merits of the situation, and they never recited in their finding any failure on the applicant's part to meet the requirements of the code. And I submit to you that the only issue is whether or not there's a hardship. And that's an issue that's faced in every case in which there's a variance. I've been appearing before this council and the Planning and Zoning Commission for more than 50 years, and I'll bet I haven't asked the city of Bureau Beach for a variance more than three times in all of those years. And I've known Tammy Vok all that time because of all the hearings I've attended. And I will say that hardship is largely in the eye of the beholder. And, you know, we don't have any physical disability here, but we do have a very important factor to the property owners, and that is access to the car and access off out of sight of the street for the car. And again, it involves 50 square feet, out of some 20-odd thousand square feet. And I really don't see any reason, and there was no reason given by the Planning and Zoning Commission before it launched into a vote, for denying the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission, that the council would care to ask. And then I'm going to ask Marjorie to step up here to the dais and, you know, take any other questions that I can't deal with.
Okay. Mr. Howell?
Thank you. I do have a few questions. Let's start with the drain field. Could you tell me where that drain field is? Do you happen to know?
Marjorie, would you join me up here, please?
You only get me because husband had to work.
That's fine.
I'm late to this ballgame, but I do feel that this is important and that it's not asking for a whole lot. We're kinda going back to, this is my pre-introductory, I just feel like we're going back to where we once were. You know, we're not really adding some additional big, some structure. So that being said, and I am under oath, but I can't swear that I know this is fact, I believe my husband said the drain field was on the east side of the house. And that, in addition to that there's no access with doors into the house or anything right now, is not feasible. And also, may I dress too well, I'm at it. To your point also, that we should have thought about before we did our additions, this carport area. I mean, yes, we put in a pool and all that, but quite frankly, we didn't think it was gonna be any big deal at all to eventually kind of put it where it almost was in an open structure to begin with. And to your point, we would have had to have demolished, you know, our brick-hard little house on either side to have addressed that before, and it would have encroached on our square footage inside the house to have done that, which is already teeny-tiny. So that's your answer to the drain. Sorry. Go ahead.
Well, that kind of leads into my other question. When looking at the diagrams, it... I think I hear you saying that the carport, as it extends now, it's not a carport anymore. It's like an open or a closed porch or a semi-closed porch?
It literally just has valise, you know, or lattice on the front and kind of a maybe two-foot cedar blocky thing, but the sides are all open still.
And that's a slab?
Yes.
It is? And that slab is part of probably 1956 or before the 70s when they changed the code?
Correct.
And so...
I've been to the house since the hearing.
Because...
I've learned a lot.
And I'm asking this question, I'll tell you why. I read all this, and I'm not a big proponent for changing code because there's a slippery slope involved. But I also want to know, from my own knowledge, where that slab originally was, where it started. In other words, if there's a solid-looking structure, which your earlier picture looked like there was a solid wall there from the street view, if that's where the carport is intended to be and not an extension from that, I think, see, where I... is intended to be and not an extension from that, I think, see, where I lost, Tim, between Tim's argument and your argument, was are we coming out from that 10 additional feet or five additional feet? Or is it to stop where that current solid wall is? Does that make sense?
I totally understand what your question is, and this is why I'm a bad person to be here, because I totally understand what you're saying. Two, you want to put this picture back up again? So we're looking at the same thing. Your question is whether we're starting at, from the lattice now forward-
Correct.
...or whether we're going back into where that solid wall is.
Or if you're just, that's right. Let's say for the sake of argument, you're removing that lattice and that's where you drive the car into.
Right. I believe that is my husband's intent, is to come forward pretty much, I don't know the exact size, and you tell me if I'm wrong, from the lattice forward to the-
That drawing might be helpful.
Oh, do you see the proposed?
Yeah.
Oh, that was so good. Read that.
Tim, could I ask you that question? Is it coming toward Gray Twig 10 or 5 or 10 feet?
They're going to add 10 feet onto it. So they've got to go into that wall to put a car in there, you know, to be in a carport. So the 10 feet would not take care of a car.
Sure.
I get it.
Tim's right. 10 feet will not take care of a car. And the chairman of the P&amp;Z, whom I don't know, but said he was a retired contractor, said you should calculate 20 feet as being necessary for the car. And that's exactly what we're talking about. 10 feet that's already undercover plus an additional 10 feet out to where in the photograph you can see the liriope tree. And it will be two or liar, two liriope plants out from the existing lattice work, approximately.
Can I ask a question on this preliminary drawing? I'm afraid that, at my age, the numbers are illegible.
It's 10 feet.
Can you tell us what those dimensions are? Because there are several of them.
Well, I had to ask him because I quit, my eyes were gone too, okay? And it looked like 10 feet. And that was, and Mr. O'Hare's, one of the problems at the hearing, we didn't have the actual dimensions what they wanted, you know, the extension, which we now have. And he applied, in the, I talked, in email, he said it was going to be 10 feet.
It is going to be 10 feet, and I started the hearing before planning and zoning at 10 feet. But then, when the chairman said you need 20 feet, I thought to myself, but didn't voice good grief, I can't ask for a space too short to put a car. But it is 20 feet in total. 10 feet under the existing roof-
And then the additional 10.
Additional 10.
Thank you.
But the width of it is more than 5 feet. I mean, you were saying 50 square feet.
It is 50. We have 10 feet of setback, side yard setback, under current zoning. The original zoning was 15 feet.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about the variance.
It's the 5 feet moving east and west.
I thought you were talking about the coverage under the car. I understand. Okay.
And the reason I, going back to, the reason for my questioning is because again, this to me, on the face of it, is kind of like the folks that say, you know, we've got to stop the airplane noise, but that, those airplanes have been landing in that path all this time, okay? But at the same time, I grew up in this neighborhood, and it's nice to have cars that are put away. It looks nicer to have cars put away than sitting out in the open if you have the option. That's all. That's why. Thank you for answering my question.
And I think you're perfectly right. You know, if we were in a trailer park or something and the cars were all scattered all over the place, it would be one thing, but that, you described the street very well, I think.
Could I just add to this kind of train of thought now that, and I'm sorry I didn't know the exact number we were coming at?
Ma'am, could you stick up, step up to the microphone? Thank you.
But to that point also, since, as you say, I mean, Gray Twig is kind of a unique street in that the houses have so much frontage, which is unique to, I think, just our street and maybe one other. I think that does weigh into what we are asking for, because to come out, you know, just another 10 feet on our frontage property line really doesn't encroach on aesthetically, you know, look from the street as it might with other streets that have a closer in, you know, property line, that all of a sudden something's really jutting towards the street. I mean, we do have the beauty of having a lot of frontage, which is nice.
If I may kind of continue along that line. And looking at the aerial photograph of Gray Twig, you know, extending that another 10 feet to me still seems to be consistent with the structures that are there. And Mr. O'Hare, you mentioned that Mr. Robinson had said there, none of the, there wasn't any objection from the neighborhoods, neighbors from this, for this extension?
Absolutely. And, you know, I've known Peter for years and years and years, and frankly, I was afraid he was going to speak against the application. He couldn't have been more enthusiastically for the application as a neighbor, and he'd taken the trouble to go up and down the street and ask the neighbors.
Thank you. And also, our exact neighbor looking at our house, wait, so on the west side, oops, sorry, on the, first time in court since I had a traffic ticket, and that's been a while, so yeah. So looking at our house again, west side, our exact neighbor, he actually had told me he was coming this morning, which I'm surprised he wasn't, and that's how strongly he feels, you know, totally you should be able to do this. And he's really our exact neighbor right on the left. So the Reynolds or Jarvis, they're both two last names, so.
Is there any other questions by council?
None here. Thank you.
Okay.
This is a drawing that we're seeing up here. Where did this come from? Is this?
Pardon me.
Okay. Is it my understanding that the carport is going to extend approximately 5 feet out from the rest of the frontage of the home?
It will extend out to the same extent that the walls of the house extend.
So east to west, it'll be a straight line?
Straight line down the west side of the house, from the new carport to the back of the house. And yes, it's going to be 5 feet further over like the rest of the house is.
Is there going to be an extension to the, to the east or west on this?
No.
Of this slab?
No.
So we're just coming out south 10 feet? And then it's, the footprint of the house will be on the south side, just straight all the way across?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
South, that's north, isn't it?
A question of the applicant. There was a carport here. Where was it?
Exactly where we're talking about, except 10 feet, it ended 10 feet farther north.
So the room that's behind it on your picture here has part of the carport in it. Is that correct?
What used to be the carport, yes.
Yes. And who made that change?
Nobody knows. I say nobody, I'm not being silly when I say it. I know Tim has been through the records looking for that, who might have done it and when they might have done it.
I could find no record.
And it may have been done without a permit. There's nothing on record that indicates that.
Mr. Olin, anything? Okay. Just has a question for the homeowner. The driveway, apparently, is it, is it an aggregate driveway currently? Or is it not paved?
There's that word I always hear. What does that mean?
Gravel or some type of-
It's concrete.
It's concrete. Is it going to be concrete all the way to the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And this property, so when did y'all purchase it?
2013.
Thank you.
Also, just to your point of that it was there, we did, and I apologize again, we did find a photo, an old photo, and actually, if you kind of Google the web and images of our house, if you look up 455, you can see a photo where the driveway actually does extend to what we're proposing. So there is a photo from some year of it in its old existing form that we had trouble with emails getting it here, so, but it's there.
Okay. Are there any further questions for the appellant?
None here.
Okay. Mr. Moocher, you'll have to get sworn in if you, okay. Tammy, would you?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. Mark Meachur, doesn't matter, but 617 Indian Lilac Road, it's about two blocks from here. And I'm not familiar with this specific house, but I have studied this material with, I think you all know somewhat of a learned eye, I hope you all have too. To me, this whole thing seems ridiculous. And Jay started to get to the point that I, one of the points that I wanted to make, and that is that there's no further encroachment into the side yard setback. We've got a 10-yard side foot setback today. There will be a 10-yard side foot, 10-foot side yard setback tomorrow if you approve this appeal, which I hope you will. The, let me tell you a little story. When I purchased my house on Indian Lilac, we went to the closing, and there was an attorney's opinion of title, and of course, the attorney, you know, they paid them a couple hundred bucks to look at the title, and they have to find something. So what they found was a 2-inch front yard setback problem. Now, my second bedroom, which is where the setback problem was, is 48 foot from the edge of the road. However, the right of way goes like 24 feet into my front yard. So in fact, it was like 49 feet from the edge of the road, and we have to have a 25-foot setback, so I had to get a variance for 2 inches, and I got one. Now, if I wouldn't have gotten one, then I couldn't have purchased the house, nobody else could have either. And when you're sticking by the, in my opinion, in this case, picking the letter of the law, that's what happens. So the reason I tell you that story is, and I hope this is the right word, but I hope you, as opposed to the current Planning and Zoning Board, will practice a little jury nullification. In other words, the letter of the law might say that you should deny this appeal, but I hope you will be practical, good citizens, and allow it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public testimony? Is there any rebuttal by the appellant at all to, I'm just going off the lines here. Any final arguments? I believe the appellant is first on the final argument.
Yeah, I would like to make some final arguments.
Well, he's got the opportunity to do it first.
Okay, I didn't switch.
Well, actually, city staff should go, and then the last word comes from the appellant.
You change that next time?
I think we've skipped some things.
Well, try not to. Go ahead.
Whatever. Okay. The first thing is, what we're hearing here, oh, this is no big deal. You know what? We have rules and regulations that are a big deal, and the Planning and Zoning Board knows you have to follow those rules. It's the way it works. And this is like the Chinese call of death by a thousand cuts, a little here, a little there, and you keep modifying the code. If it's such a big deal, then you need to either change the code or come in with some sort of provision that would handle this in a fair way. Because there are a lot of other lots in the same situation, because you, you know, just because you want a carport doesn't give you the right to call that a unique hardship. And they have not shown that they can't put it somewhere else. Oh, they come up with aesthetics. All right. There's plenty of room in the front yard, and we don't have enough information in the backyard. You have oak trees and all that. We don't know if they would be impacted. And as I said again, they had opportunity, you know, oh, we need it near our kitchen. These are all preferred locations they want. They've made decisions, and these decisions have resulted in coming in for a variance to take care of this. I mean, this, it used to be a carport back when, and it was converted. So somebody took care of that when it was, and now we have these decisions being made that forces you to go into a variance. And I think it's important to understand that. The other thing I bring out is, just because the neighbors want it, what are we going to have? The neighbors doing legislation? Are they going to change codes because everybody, oh, you can be 2 feet from my property line? You can't go that way. We have rules and regulations, you go through a legislative process, public hearings to come up with this. You can't just have a bunch of people because they like to do something and are okay with it to go ahead and authorize that. I mean, that is, that is anathema to this kind of process. Whether you approve this is going to be a big deal, these don't set precedents, even if I think this is a bad decision if you go that way, you know, it's not that. But I think if you look at meeting the criteria in the law and the code, what you're supposed to do, there is no flexibility to, oh, it's not a big deal, let's let them have it. Oh, we need to have a carport because it all looked good along. There isn't that in the code, and that's the intent of the code to do it that way. Those kind of issues need to be taken care of and a change in the code, not in a individual application for a variance. So unless you have some questions, maybe that's mine, and we still stand by our recommendation.
Tim, I'm just going to ask you a quick question. I'm looking at the title of this, and it says a 15-foot side property setback for existing carport.
Well, I told you, it's not existing carport now. That was a- It's not an existing carport now, it's actually a porch that was a converted carport.
Okay, because, you know, I'm finding myself getting to the point that, you know, if this extension lies within the rectangular footprint of what's already there, I'm not seeing-
Well, that's, that's, that's an encroachment. You could, if you go by that, anytime you do an extension, that you extend the encro- that's an encroachment. You can build up, but you can't go sideways.
I'm not understanding the encroachment. You've got a street in front of you, and you've got the front of the house that's-
No, you have a side yard encroachment because you're moving the structure further along that 10-foot line. I mean, you know, if you go to the, a crazy idea, you could put a whole structure on that property all along that line if you went by that. That's why a 10-foot, the extension of the encroachment, and we consider that when you go down, further down the line, and the structure itself.
Okay, I just asked the question earlier, that the 10-foot extension does not extend beyond the rest of the house south?
It does.
Okay, all right.
It's a 10-foot, it doesn't encroach further into the west.
I know it doesn't cross east or west, but south?
It's south, it will go 10 feet further down.
Okay, so it extends outside of the rectangular footprint of the-
Of the current house. That's exactly right.
Okay.
I think an error that's being made here is that no owner of the house created the encroachment. The encroachment occurred when the city of Vero Beach changed the setback line from 10 to 15 feet. The property owners didn't do that, not in '56, not in '70, and not today. And we're not asking you to do that. That was done to the property owners by the city of Vero Beach. And I'm not saying it's a good or bad decision. I have a house in Key West, one of the best investments I've ever made in Old Town. It's probably worth a million dollars now. It's 3 feet on either side from the neighbor. So a 15-foot side yard setback was not the creation of the homeowners. And a hardship is not necessarily something disastrous. You know, if Tim is correct, there shouldn't be a procedure for variances in the code at all. What is the reason for giving people a right to a variance without ever granting it because it sets a precedent? Of course it does. Every time you grant a variance, it sets a precedent. But that is not a reason to deny this application, because the encroachment, once again, very simply, was not the creation of the property owners, it was the creation of the city.
Wayne, just by, do you happen to know when that nine and a half to 15-foot encroachment law had changed? Or Tim, did you know when that?
No, it was back in, when it was built back, I looked at the codes, and it was back there in the 70s, it was changed to the, what we currently have, basically what I discovered.
Okay, so the owner of the home purchased after that and knew about it?
Of course.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Mr. McGary.
Sure.
This would be a precedent. What legal, and this may be a question for Mr. Common, what legal ramifications does the precedent have?
Well, actually, a variance case does not set precedence for another variance.
Thank you for your answer.
Yeah. Each variance has to stand on its own based on other criteria.
Mayor, I believe Mrs. Wilson has a question.
Could I just follow up to one of the arguments you said, which was, it hasn't been proven that all options, you know, can't be entertained. And I'm no engineer, but I do kind of know where my trees are and what a car is and what it takes to get it through certain areas. And I can pretty much say that the other options would not be feasible.
We are in the council discussion. Was there any arguments the council would like to present to each other?
I'd like to make a general statement.
Okay. Okay.
We are here to approve or deny this variance, and we have a set of things, a set of criteria that we have to look at, listed in section 66.02. You have A through G, many of which this variance would not have any effect on, for example, increase the danger of fire, panic, and peril to public safety. There's several of them. The wonderful thing about a variance and having the ability to make a, an exception, if you will, is that it creates a situation for change, and betterment cannot happen without change. Now, you could argue that change can create a poor situation also, but we've analyzed this, okay? I came in here with the full intent of, after reading all the material, of not backing this up. But I don't think it's going to cause the neighbors to have, suffer any sort of hardship. And I don't think it's going to be, aesthetically, it's not going to be bad. And I don't, I don't have a problem with it at this point after hearing the argument.
Mr. Turner?
I'd just like to say that, yeah, under section 6602, I mean, clearly, even the staff says that, you know, should we find for this, should we find in favor of this variance, that it would not cause any of the adverse impacts listed in this section. So clearly, that's put aside. And considering this matter, I would recommend or suggest to council that this particular issue be grandfathered. This is a structure from 1956. It complies with the code that it existed at that time. They have reviewed other options, and for it to be aesthetically, aesthetically pleasing and to retain value in the whole neighborhood, I think this is the right decision. I mean, you couldn't place a carport in the middle of the front yard. I mean, this is just not going to work. The neighbors are in support of this project. Once again, this is protecting their, their particular community. The new homeowners have made significant investments in the property, in improvements, therefore trying to retain that value and committed to the area. The variance will not set a precedence, and I would suggest that we move for approval of this variance.
Mr. Turner? Well, in 1977, I was involved in a situation this reminds me of. And we had a situation with various codes and regulations and so on, and people, you could change the code and regulation, but it didn't completely fix the situation. What I learned is that no code, no law is perfect and fits all situations. There has to be room for a variance. You know, I accept when this house was built, this could have been done. So I accept the conclusion that you could move 10 feet farther forward if that's what the request is, along the same line that the house was built on. You know, you can't have perfect laws because laws, you know, that which protects man from man and civilization, and the tool of that is law. But there's no such thing as perfect laws and perfect codes. And in this particular case, I think to take the code and say, it doesn't meet current code, I, I think that's illogical. I'd grant the variance.
Okay. Is there anybody that'd like to make the motion?
I move that based on competent substantial evidence presented in the applicable code provisions that we reverse the planning board decision and approve this variance.
I'd like to make a suggestion that specifically, Mrs. Turner, that maybe, I think they're asking to come 10 feet forward.
Right. And what the actual variance is, is a 5-foot variance to the side yard setback, coming out 10 feet from the house, is what you would be approving.
So that's what I'm suggesting, you accept that wording of Mr. Common. Did you accept that?
Yes, I accept that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion in a second? Just as a, as a discussion item, I mean, I really don't like the idea of changing the rules on this. Quite frankly, I didn't think the hardship was there. But, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem bringing this back around and talking about maybe modifying the setback in the code. I just don't like, I just don't like going against these kind of things. But quite frankly, I think it does, does help the neighborhood. And I guess the variance is kind of a, one of those tools that, in some circumstances in this neighborhood, it's probably better to have a car in a garage than it is sitting out front. Whereas in some gated communities, you can't, they frown on that quite, quite greatly. But in any case, you have a motion in a second. Ms. Svak, would you call the roll?
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we have a motion of adjournment.
So move.
So move. We are adjourned.